And welcome to the regular council meeting Tuesday, December 20th, 2022, beginning at 4:40 PM in council chamber and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of the Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation, an unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin, Inishewabe, Ojibwe, Cree, and Maiti people in our community since time immemorial, and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. But the call to order and a moment of silence. And the approval of the agenda?
Moved by Council Lad Chaba, seconded by Council Casey Owens. Be resolved with the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, December 20th, 2022. We approve this, fulfilling the...
All in favor? Item carried. Item number three, declaration of pecuniary interest. None?
Yep, there's...
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Council Ranger.
Hi, Janice Ranger, I'm declaring direct, or sorry, indirect pecuniary interest on the agenda of the meeting dated December 20th, 2022. Open meeting, agenda item number 6.5. Agenda title, parking enforcement on private property. It is an indirect. I am a shareholder, director, or office of a private corporation affected. I have a controlling interest in the public corporation affected. I am a member of a body, and I am a partner and/or employee of a person or body with a pecuniary interest. The nature of my interest is as follows. I am an employee of Northern College who is seeking parking enforcement on private property.
Thank you. Council Dykens?
Mine is same, I, Dolly Dykens, am declaring direct deemed or and/or indirect pecuniary interest in the agenda of the meeting dated December 20th, 2022. In the open meeting, agenda item number 6.5. Agenda title, parking enforcement on private property. It is an indirect pecuniary interest. And the nature of my interest is as follows. I am an employee of Northern College.
Thank you. Item number four, petitions and delegations. There are none. Item number five, acceptance of the meetings and recommendations.
Moved by Council Pat Kylie, seconded by Council Dolly Dykens. Be resolved that council approved the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held Tuesday, December 6th, 2022.
All in favor? Item carried.
Moved by Council Janice Ranger, seconded by Council Lad Chaba. Be resolved that council received the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the joint committee district council meeting held Saturday, December 10th, 2022.
All in favor? Item carried. Item number six, reports of municipal officers and communications. Item 6.1, fire services apparatus update. Alan Smith, chief administrative officer, acting interim fire chief.
Moved by Council Casey Owens, seconded by Council Dolly Dykens. Be resolved that report number 2022 CAO 009, entitled Fire Services Apparatus Update be received for information. And finally, that the chief administrative officer be directed to identify options for the replacement of an aerial ladder truck for council's future consideration.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to members of council. On May 18th, 2021, council passed a bottom resolution that staff be directed to shop around and report back to council with options of vehicles and prices for consideration. As mentioned in the report before council tonight, Fire Chief Adair did report back on the February 18th, 2021, with an option of purchasing them in a new aerial, a one like the enforcer seventy-five-foot aluminum ladder truck. At that meeting, council directed staff to proceed with the purchasing process for the replacement of the 1988-year aerial. With the absence of the fire chief, in order to proceed with the direction of council, required some research on my part. This research revealed concerns within fire services staff of the purchasing of the aerial, similar to the truck mentioned in the November 18th report. One of the main concerns involved the length of the ladder. In other words, a seventy-five-foot ladder would not be sufficient for Kirkland Lake. During this research, the price of the seventy-five-foot aerial, when identified in the report, had increased from 1.2 to 1.7 million, with a waiting period of two to three years to obtain the truck. A truck with a longer ladder, for example, just to inform council, say a hundred-foot one, is closer to $2 million mark. Furthermore, when deciding to replace an expensive piece of equipment, like an aerial ladder truck with a new one, it is important to have these discussions within the overall weak requirements and priorities of the department. The importance of recognizing these requirements became all the more important as the department's first-line pumper was taken out of service in early January, early November of this year. Parts will no longer be manufactured to fix the problem, and the life of the truck was at the age where it can no longer function as the department's number-one pumper for much longer. Therefore, exercising my authority under bylaw 22-019 during the way into the superior council, I approved the purchase of a pumper from the Collingwood Fire Department for $150,000, and we were extremely unfortunate that that vehicle was actually available. Now, this truck will last for approximately six years. However, this truck will have to be replaced by that time. So any discussion we have about replacing an aerial, especially with a new one, must be taken into consideration with the complete requirements of the department. Administration is recommending that CAO engage with the newly-formed Fire Services Apparatus Working Group to discuss options for council's consideration regarding the replacement of the aerial truck while looking at the long-term apparatus needs of the department. I welcome any questions that council may have. Firefighter Paul Kovak is also here to answer questions of council. Firefighter Kovak is also part of the apparatus working group.
Any questions, Council Ranger?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to CAO and... Eva?
Sova.
Sova? If the purchase of a hundred-foot truck were the option, how long would that truck be available in service? What would be the expected?
Through your worship to councilor, I believe it's about 20 years.
It could even be longer. Yeah, frontline pumpers are 20, and then if they're not used, then you can justify it. A longer service life, you get more out of it.
Thank you. Any further questions, Councilor Owen?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, to the CAO and Fire Department in council. I'm very pleased to see in this report that we are looking at a longer-term replacement plan, that we will not be caught again with our pants down and no fire trucks to go to fires. I brought this up with budgeting process. I brought this up with getting a fleet management program in at the Works Department, and I'm so happy to see that now, okay, we need to buy this vehicle. We need to look at the options. But we also know in six years' time, I believe it was six years you said, in six years' time, we have to replace that pumper too. So we can't blow the budget buying a brand-new seventy-five-foot ladder truck knowing that in six years' time, we've got to replace the pumper. Otherwise, the council at that date will be back in the same position. So I'm very pleased, and I assume that this is the direction that has come to our interim fire chief and CAO. But it's important to plan ahead. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ranger?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to CAO and Fire Department. If there was a consideration of a larger ladder, would the current station be able to house that fire truck? Or would this be another issue that we have to consider and look at?
Through your worship to councilor, that is a concern. And having that ladder truck, there may be some concern of it actually fitting in the building and the weight of it on the floor. Again, there are considerations of what do we do in the fire hall in the future? You know, if you make alterations to the current hall, is that money not being well invested if you're going to the fire hall one day? It's done. So there's a lot of things to consider, but the weight of the vehicle is definitely a concern, you know? And so there's something to be considered also.
Any further questions? Okay, are we comfortable with voting, or do we want the motion re-run?
Re-run.
Re-run, okay.
Moved by Council Casey Owens, seconded by Council Dolly Dykens. Be resolved that report number 2022 CAO 009, entitled Fire Services Apparatus Update be received for information. And finally, that this CAO be directed to identify options for the replacement of the aerial ladder truck for council's future consideration.
All in favor? Item carried. Oh, yes, Council Owen.
Yes, through your worship. Do we have any idea what the timeline is that you'll be running this back to council? I mean, just roughly, I'm not asking for September 14th.
Through your worship to members of the council, I'm hoping the first quarter of next year. Okay, and it depends a lot on the schedule of the firefighters. It's not a normal 95 schedule to bring everything together, so that is my hope.
Thank you.
Item was carried. Item 6.2, Town of Kirkland Lake Solar Inc. update. Sean LeCard, Director of Corporate Services.
Moved by Council Lad Chaba, seconded by Council Rick Owen. Be resolved that report number 2022 corp. 008, entitled Town of Kirkland Lake Solar Inc. update be received for information.
Madam Mayor, through you to the council. Council resolved that it's October 4th, regular meeting. It was moved by Lad Chaba and seconded by Nick Owen to bring forward a report with information on solar. We've just had a few years, tough years with production, and we just wanted to take a look at all the information we had on file for the meeting today. Still, we did bring a report forward. Just going to go over a few of the items. October 15th, 2013, a bylaw was passed, basically indicating going forward with the incorporation of a company. And October 22nd, 2013, the Town of Kirkland Lake Solar Inc. was incorporated. February 20th, 2018, a bylaw was passed authorizing the mayor and chief administrative officer to negotiate an executive partnership agreement. On November 28th, 2018, the Town of Kirkland Lake signed the partnership agreements with Cap Energy. Just a few of the meeting dates. First meeting was October 10th, 2018, and we had our last meeting of August 34th, 2022. Some of the meeting minutes have been included in attachment five in the report. However, there is a few meeting minutes that are missing that I'm still looking to get from Cap Energy. The issues with the solar panel tracking system were discussed at our November 16th, 2021 meeting. So we had an actual meeting before the council meeting, and then in the council meeting, there was a delegation by Paul Nato, the project manager. And then again, September 20th, 2022. So just going to give a little timeline. If anybody wants to go on to these, either one of these, November 16th, 2021, September 20th, 2022, they're on our YouTube channel. They're both on there, so you can basically hear what Mr. Nato had to say. Mr. Nato explained that the initial problem with the tracking system occurred in October, November 2020 due to the shortage of supply of parts. The tracking systems were not corrected until late 2021, and so that's basically when we met. And so after that meeting, when they went to put the tracking system back on track, they identified that the control cards and inverters were damaged, I think from water coming down over the couple of years. The tracking system was down for most 2022. So that's why, if you look back, you see production was down in 2021 and 2022, and will just be repaired at the end of this year. And I'm thinking Q1 of 2023, when we look at the supply of parts. At the September meeting, Mr. Nato also explained that the tracking problems over two years had resulted in a large loss of production, indicated that he was looking into both the possibility of warranty and/or an insurance claim. So we will look to have a meeting in early Q1 with the new representative, Council Chaba, and get an update on that, and hopefully things are back on track at that point. As you see in the report, we should have some of the CAO 1 solar panels tracking as of now and possibly some of two, but they did say it would be into Q1 before everything was done. In the financial considerations, we did include the 2013 original cash flows. And yes, the average proposed net revenues totaled $155,000, with $180,000 for the first year. Obviously, this did not materialize due to mechanical failures at that time. I included updated cash flows projections provided by Cap Energy as of May 2022, and that's in 2022. In 2022, they are showing a small cash flow loss of $4,704. Having said that, since the cash flows have been made, we've had the problems with the tracking systems and the cost to fix them was upwards of $90,000. So I would think that that loss will be quite a bit more than what it's showing for 2022. And now we're going into 2023, so I would say that there's going to be a bit of, a bit of, you know, repair costs that's going to show up in there as well. So the cash flows that they projected there showed anywhere from $166,000 to $193,000 going forward for the next 12 or 13 years. Having said that, I did put in here that we want to look at that with a bit of caution. Currently, the Town of Kirkland Lake Solar Inc. has just under $4 million owing to Cap Energy. Or Cap Energy, sorry. That is, so that's not owing from the Town of Kirkland Lake. That's owing from the actual solar company. So I just want to reiterate that the town does not have any money into this yet, we said. But that amount that's still owing, the cash flow does not take into consideration interest or capital or principal payments on that. So when we looked at it, I mean, depending on best, it looked like basically a best, you know, break even if things, you know, end up in the way the cash flows are looking. Also included a copy of the financial statement of 2021. We did pass, and we looked at them a little bit, but we just didn't include the names. So... Unfortunately, there were many issues over the first three years of the project and really, you know, ending up in poor financial results. Once the tracking systems are fixed in Q1, 2023, the operations and financial results of the project should improve. And I think we, you know, we have to make a few decisions on what we're going to do in the future here. But anyways, that's the information provided. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Director LeCard, before I open the floor, do you believe that this is an item that perhaps council should seek legal advice before continuing the discussion with?
Through you, Madam Mayor, and to council. I do feel maybe we should look at the option of meeting with their representative just to see what are, you know, what we can, what we can do moving forward, you know, what the right course of action is.
In light of this, if council agrees, we should accept the report as for the recommendation for information only, and vote in favor of accepting it as per information only, and then move on with the meeting. All in favor? Oh. No? Sir Kylie?
Through your worship to Sean. Is the property itself registered in Cap Solar's name or Kirkland Lake, Town of Kirkland Lake?
Through you, Mayor White. I'm honestly not 100% sure. I'm sure, I think it's Town of Kirkland Lake's property because they're, they show a lease payment coming to us. So I would say it's not, but I can look into that for you.
Because we have a little more control over it in that sense. Thank you.
So as, Council Chaba?
Yeah, I think my motion brought this to the table. The intent was not to receive this for information purposes. That was not the intent of that motion. So, your worship by saying that you're just going to receive this for information purposes defeats the objective of my motion. So I have questions, so I'm not too sure. When is the next meeting for us to ask questions if this... If you're asking us to receive this for our information purposes.
Okay. So as per the new information, possibly council should seek legal advice before openly discussing this any further. I believe the best course of action for this council would be to receive as per the recommendation at this time, and it will come back to us possibly in camera once legal advice has been sought. And you know from past practice, it doesn't take very long for an item to come back when, once we seek legal advice. Is there any, sorry, is there any additions from administration as to a timeline?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to council. We can actually, probably say in early new year, we can engage with our regional council and get back on the agenda for council. I would say either by January, early February.
Okay, thank you. Council Owen, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say that I'm not a lawyer, but there's a lot of stuff in here that I could inadvertently ask questions about that ultimately could come back and cost the taxpayers a lot of money. I may be thinking I'm asking a very innocent question to get the information out of the taxpayer, when in fact legally, I'm asking a totally different question. So when it comes back, I believe it should come back to an in-camera meeting so we can get advice from our lawyers to have an in-camera meeting. And that protects the taxpayers from any inadvertent liability we might expose them to.
Madam Mayor, can you read the recommendation?
Sure. Moved by Council Lad Chaba, seconded by Council Rick Owen. Be resolved that report number 2022 corp. 008, entitled Town of Kirkland Lake Solar Inc. update be received for information.
All in favor? Item carried. Thank you, sir. Item number 6.4, asset transfers.
6.3.
Sorry, 6.3. Kirkland Lake, I'm jumping the gun, no, sorry. Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation, completed business case study. Wilfred Haas, Director of Economic Development.
Moved by Council Dolly Dykens, seconded by Council Janice Ranger. Be resolved that report number 2022, EDV 60, entitled Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation, completed business case study be received, and that the business case study for the establishment of a municipal services corporation, an example of tourism promotion entity, substantially presented in attachment, whether the report be approved, and that the business case study be circulated to the provincial government as part of the municipality's submission for the purposes of serving as an eligible tourism entity for the administration of a municipal accommodation tax in the Town of Kirkland Lake. And finally, that council direct the CAO to retain an internal professional advisory services firm to establish and organize a municipal services, sorry, municipal service corporation for the purposes of identified in the business case study.
I don't know how you don't come up for air. Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor, to council. This goes back to the municipal accommodations tax. It is for the purposes of the new councilors. The tax that the province allows municipalities to levy on short-term stays in the community, specifically in hotels, but other facilities as well. In Kirkland Lake, we were interrupted with COVID as well as staff turnovers. It's taking a little bit longer. In terms of our operating environment, the greatest challenge we've had is that we don't have an eligible tourism entity to partner with. The way the tax works is we can levy the tax, say, at 4%. When the tax comes in, the municipality keeps half. Half of it must go towards an eligible tourism entity that will do destination or promotional work on behalf of the municipality. During the past two years, we looked at different options. One option that we brought forward was the idea of establishing our own corporation. We call it an economic development corporation, a tourism development. They're loosely grouped underneath that heading Municipal Service Corporation, so MSC for short. That was met with council's interest and direction was given to proceed with developing that idea. One of the first steps you have to do is do a business case study. It's fairly pro forma, but it does involve going out to the public, having a meeting, asking, you know, for some input, but also scoping out what you think that corporation would do and how it would work. That was done in November, where we had a public consultation. It was just, I think it was on the 11th or so. And afterwards, I took that information, plus the best case or best practices I could find from other municipalities, and put together the business case study that's attached to it. If this is accepted by council, then the next step would be to submit it to the government for review, which I don't think would take very long, but let's say one or two months. And at the same time, that you would be commissioning a firm to set, to actually establish a corporation with the terms of reference in that. At that point, it would be okay, once you have that corporation up technically set and description of how it would operate is in here, then it would be bringing in the public and seeing what are you going to be doing. On a second railway track would be the mat itself. I would be working with my colleagues in Treasury to bring forward the documentation that would enable council to pass that bylaw to put the mat in progress. So again, for the purposes of this particular report, it is to let you know that the business case study has been done, to ask for you to accept it, and to ask for direction as to how to proceed.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Absolutely. I noted. We can go ahead and call for the vote. Does anybody require it to be being read a second time? No? All in favor? Passed. Okay, now, item 6.4, asset transfers to corporation policy. Again, Wilfred Haas, Director of Economic Development.
Moved by Council Rick Owen, seconded by Council Pat Kylie. Be resolved that report number 2022, EDV 60, entitled Asset Transfers to Corporations Policy be received, and that council approved FIN 2022 006 Asset Transfers to Corporations Policy, and finally, that FIN 2022 006 Asset Transfers to Corporations Policy be inserted into the corporate policy menu.
Thank you. I may eventually start calling you worship, Madam Mayor. Through you, Madam Mayor. This is a continuation of the previous topic. The municipal act allows the municipality to form a corporation. It also allows municipality to assist that corporation with products, services, people. It can do so also at a rate that is less than fair market value. However, to do so, the municipality must put into place an asset transfer to corporations policy. That basically, for public consumption, it explains all the rules and regulations that you're going to follow when you're transferring, say, the time of a staff member or computers or a rental office. And it allows the, it allows your Treasury Department to have the process and format in place so that everything is done consistently and reported properly. So I drafted that based on the gaming best practices I could find, and that was done in consultation with Treasury Department.
Any questions? Okay, we're going to go ahead and hold out. All in favor? Unanimous? Item six point five, parking enforcement on private property. Again, Wilfred Haas, Director of Economic Development.
Counselor, I can just put in the name. So I'll read the proposed motion. Moved by Counselor Lad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Stacy Owens, be resolved that report number twenty-two, BEV sixty-two, entitled Parking Enforcement on Private Property be received. And finally, that council declined the application from Northern College for municipal parking enforcement services on private property.
Through you, Madam Mayor. We received a letter in September from the college campus manager asking that the municipality provide parking enforcement services at the campus. This has been done in the past. There are bylaws on the books as explained in the report, where it has been done at the hospital as well as at the college. Unfortunately, there's very little record keeping as to revenues generated, activity, or anything like that. From a staff's perspective, we're recommending that the request be declined. The reasoning being that it does not fit within the strategic plan that council has put forward. Secondly, we are, we don't have that many resources. We have a single person. Thirdly, I'm not sure, and again, lack of historical record, not sure that the money that would be earned would be sufficient even to cover our own costs. The report does explore other ways that the issue could be addressed. It could be that the college hires or appoints an existing staff person to enforce that parking. That has been done in other jurisdictions. They could hire a private firm to do it. Should council decide that it does want to go down this route, then we took it upon ourselves to assess what that operating environment would be for to provide such a service. And I have to say that bylaws that were in place from two thousand and eight upwards, they had some holes in them. So we'd recommend that the bylaw governing this would be rewritten. And I I wrote one just so you would know and see what the differences could be with that and the ones in the past. Would argue that in providing such a service, there should be a actual contract or letter of agreement. Something that spells out who does what, what's required, everything like that. Such a kind of report being published, you heard back from our insurance company that that's something that they would like to see as well. We'd like to recommend that if should go forward, there should be an established fee. Something that covers the costs. It's the proposal from the college is that we would collect all the revenues from the tickets. But as I tried to explain in the process of formatting a ticket, it's a lot more money that you're spending than what you're getting. And so for that purpose, the last recommendation would be that you also look at the process behind bylaw enforcement. You know, is there a way to make this more effective? Is it a way to make it more cost-effective for the municipality, i.e. addition of penalties or so? But those are the recommendations that should council wish to proceed. There's the other alternatives, hiring somebody or a firm. Our recommendation, it doesn't fit the strategic plan and our resources and dollar value are questionable to do with.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, I assume our bylaw, if we did go ahead with this, the bylaw enforcement officer would be involved in this, which is taking away from their time from other enforcement issues in the town of Kirkland Lake.
Yes, especially during the winter months. The demands for time for that are already very significant. So that may be the busiest time.
Plus, we take all the heat from the residents with the tickets.
Counselor Owen?
Yes, Madam Mayor, through you to Director Haas, and if you allow me some latitude, I have more than one question here.
Yes, sir.
Did we not provide this service to the hospital at one time?
We did, and it was terminated by the hospital, I believe in twenty eighteen. I don't know all the specifics of it. I understand that our bylaw enforcement person, who was a contracted service at that time, was attended to her work very well.
Okay, yeah.
That being goalless.
But do you know what the hospital replaced our service with? Did they?
I understand they appointed their own security within the building.
Yeah. And that's my point. We have one bylaw officer, period, who tries to work eight hours a day. I assume, or whatever, seven hours, whatever regular day is. We can't afford to withdraw services from the rest of our taxpayers in order to provide service to a private institution. To me, that's that's not how municipal money should be spent. I brought up the hospital because it's my understanding too, that they merely gave one of their employees the authority to issue parking tickets. And I'm not sure whether they had to work out an agreement with the town or whatever.
I don't believe so, sir.
But but in any case, they did it. They didn't add an employee. And you know what? Bylaw officer's job is a very difficult job. They take flack from the time they get on the job to the time they get off the job. Do we really want them taking flack from people that are illegally parking at a private institution as well? I don't think that's fair to our employees either. So I'm all in favor of not providing the service. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shaba?
I'm good.
Okay. Any further questions? Counselor Owen?
Through you. When we operated at the hospital, we believe we also offered at the college.
You had a.
Yeah, because that was within our term. Because I remember getting a text message from a upset gentleman. His wife had gone and taken a work, she had swapped vehicles and by law had gone by. So this is kind of a flip-flop on their part within two or three years. Yes, we want the service. No, we don't. Yes, we.
To be clear, I think that with the college, they had backed out of the service because of COVID, they said. And the hospital had backed out of it for other reasons prior to.
Okay, I just remember did it leave that text message about the ticket? So I.
Counselor Kylie?
Through you, your worship, to Will. I think the hospital are required to have some type of security on the on premises and they gave them also the duty of parking. So that's how they solve that type of issue.
Any further questions? Okay, we can call for the vote. Does anyone require the voting name right now? No? Okay. All in favor? Item carried? Yes, please. Item six point six, twenty twenty-two reserves and reserve funds and year-end transfer, Lloyd Proctor, Treasurer.
Moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Pat Kylie, be resolved that report number twenty-two, PIN fourteen entitled twenty-two reserves and reserve funds and year-end transfer be received. And finally, the council direct the treasurer to complete the following transfers related to the twenty twenty-two fiscal year-end. Any net revenues from sending land sales to the community improvement program reserve. Any net revenues from the sale of land located on Archer Drive to the Archer Drive Reserve Fund. Any net revenues from the lease of the daycare building on Queen Street to the daycare reserve. Any winter control surplus, an example of actual expenses less than budget to the winter control stabilization reserve. Any operating surplus to the reserve for working capital. Any surplus in waterworks to the waterworks reserve fund. Any surplus in wastewater to the wastewater reserve fund. Any unspent portion of tax levy dollars from twenty twenty-two capital projects to the infrastructure capital reserve. Amount to the library programming reserve and the library capital reserve fund in accordance with motions provided by the Kirkland Lake Public Library Board. Amounts from the infrastructure capital reserve to fund. To fund any overspent portion of capital project, excluding waterworks and wastewater capital projects completed in twenty twenty-two, where no alternative sources of funding are available to the extent that a balance exists in that reserve. Amounts from the waterworks reserve fund to fund any overspent portion of waterworks capital projects completed in twenty twenty-two, where no alternative sources of funding are available to the extent that a balance exists in that reserve fund. And amounts from the wastewater reserve fund to fund any overspent portion of wastewater capital projects completed in twenty twenty-two, where no alternative source sources of funding are available to the extent that a balance exists in that reserve fund.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to council. That was a multiple. This is more a housekeeping type of report to you. Part of the accounting and auditing standards and best practices within a municipality is to make decisions around where your surpluses or deficits, as you approach your end, are allocated or put to. This particular report is identifying where we plan on putting them right now. I don't have any solid numbers on what those surpluses or deficits are. But without this particular report, this motion, we kind of offend some accounting and auditing rules right out of the chute, and we end up in a kind of a funny position when we do our statements. I've included as an attachment the reserves and reserve funds as they sit, based on more motions, council motions after any year and where they started. It doesn't include what the anticipated activity is under this report. It kind of just gives you an idea of how we sit at this point in time before the effects of the current year current year activity. So I think we've talked about this before. We're in a fairly good position when it comes to reserves and reserve funds. And we have a significant amount of deferred revenue available for capital projects, primarily infrastructure-type projects. So that's what the attachment is, kind of giving some numbers to that discussion we've had. This is the second time, I think, now. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? None. Hold the vote. All in favor? Item carried? Thank you, sir. Item number seven, considerations of notice of motions. There are none this evening. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws.
Moved by Counselor Lad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Dolly Dykens, be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time. Number passed, signed by the mayor in third, and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-two ninety-nine being a bylaw to establish the remuneration for members of council for the town of Kirkland.
All in favor? Item carried? Item number nine, questions from council to staff. None were sent. Item number ten, notices of motion. None noted. Item number eleven, councillors' reports. None noted. Okay. Oh, here. Counselor Kylie?
Since I missed the last meeting, but during the timeframe from our first meeting, I did attend the rally in Timmins with the Premier of Ontario and the Minister of Mines, George Perry. Was well represented and good information on what's basically a lot had to do with the mining industry in the north. It's very well received.
Excellent. Any further reports?
Yeah.
Yep. Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, through you. Madam Mayor. I guess we are all aware of the fact that the train stop in Swastika will be a reality someday. So some of us are really keeping track of that, making sure that the people that are make decisions, reminding them that it should be a reality. So not long ago on the radio, so the government is moving forward. To my delight anyways, and Swastika train stop will be included.
Thank you, sir. Anything further from council members? Okay. So I do have a proclamation this evening for Alzheimer Awareness Month. This is for January twenty twenty-three. Whereas Alzheimer Awareness Month is recognized during the month of January to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a degenerative brain disorder that most often occurs in people over the age of sixty-five, but can occur in adults in their thirties, forties, and fifties. And whereas there are over six hundred and thirty thousand Canadians living with Alzheimer's disease, with a projected almost one million Canadians living with dementia by twenty thirty-one. And whereas the Alzheimer Society, Cochrane to Misscaming, provides programs and services to all citizens of Cochrane to Misscaming District. And whereas the Alzheimer Society, Cochrane to Misscaming, encourages the council, residents, business, and services of Kirkland Lake to break the stigma and fear of exclusion attached to Alzheimer and dementia, and build the community into a dementia-friendly community that supports those living with dementia to maintain an active role in our community, to take part in new things, and to continue activities they enjoy with confidence. Now, therefore, I, Stacy White, Mayor of the Town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim the month of January twenty twenty-three as Alzheimer Awareness Month in the Town of Kirkland Lake, and that the Town of Kirkland Lake builds towards becoming a dementia-friendly community. Thank you for that. Item number eleven point three, Roma delegation requests. So as council knows, a large reason why staff and council members attend conferences is the opportunity to delegate directly to the ministers of provincial government. As such, these are the requests we have submitted for Roma in January. Not all of them have been accepted as of yet, but we're hopeful. So item number one and two are actually joint delegations with the city of Tomiscaming Shores, including community safety and wellbeing plan implementation as led by the Town of Kirkland Lake, which has been accepted by Minister Kersner, Solicitor General, as well as unauthorized development in territories without municipal organization under the Planning Act, and that will be led by Tomiscaming Shores. Item number two is to secure water supply from climate change risks. It's a conditional grant assistance to overhaul the McTavish Lake to Gull Lake recharge system to ensure drinking water security in face of climate change with a request of three hundred thousand. Item four is industrial park development, conditional grant assistance to engage professional service to identify potential site or sites of new industrial parks and prepare a Class C preliminary design of development challenges and costs, a request of four hundred thousand. Decommissioning of Swastika wastewater plant, conditional grant assistance to enable the municipality to decommission and demolish the Swastika water treatment plant as required to remove a potential environmental risk to Otto Lake, a request of one point five million. Residential development, conditional grants assistance to enable the municipality to prepare municipal land for housing, a request of three hundred thousand dollars. And item number six, of course, the connecting link funding as previously summarized by C A O, Alan Smith. So those are the items that we will be looking to delegate to, and I will keep you up to date as our requests are accepted or not.
So, sorry.
Yes, Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, where are you reading this from? Are we?
So it's the verbal report, items number eleven point two, eleven point three, and eleven point four on your agenda?
Your verbal left file.
And yes, Counselor Kylie?
Through you, your worship. Are we in attendance at the Roma conference, or is it by Zoom or?
So we'll be in physical attendance.
Good.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to the last item is item eleven point four, the bi-weekly bi-weekly review of the office of the mayor. Since our last meeting, myself, council, staff, and administration have received both holiday greetings and congratulations from the following groups or individuals. If it was sent via traditional mail, these items are displayed in the mayor's office for viewing. The Honorable Elizabeth Dowdwell, Lieutenant Government of Ontario, the Honorable Doug Ford, M P A C Board of Directors, Michelle Bello, City of Timmins, La Corporation de la Ville de Hirst, Mayor and Members of County, House, Gasing Council, Chad Evans, Ontario Northland, St. Theaters on the Rock and Anthen Church. As included in the meetings at the minute meetings at the beginning of this meeting, a joint Miskin District open and closed meeting is held for municipal council orientation provided by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. This is important to note as it is the first venture of its kind uh within the area. And the Town of Kirkland Lake is looking forward to forging more of these partnerships with our neighbor municipalities in the coming years. The Office of the Mayor has had meetings with individuals and groups concerning the development in unorganized townships and current physician recruitment. And today I have the pleasure of accompanying firefighter Jeremy Aldrich Hughes and O P P Officer Adam Goaching to federal school to collect donations for the local food bank, which staff and students have collected. The students canvassed the neighborhoods surrounding their school, singing Christmas carols as part of their collection efforts. They donated more than a hundred and fifty dollars to this worthy cause. As a spur of the moment opportunity for community outreach, it was incredibly in it was incredible to be invited to witness the pure joy uh with these children, the fire truck pulled out into the schoolyard um and and to interact with members of essential services and their vehicles, it was just incredible. And it made today a great thing. Last, and lastly, this year the town has recognized members of staff and volunteers, including two members who served this community for a quarter of a century, Danny Sawswell and Justin Allison, as well as Corinne Renaud, having served an incredible thirty years at T P R. We also saw the retirement of five staff members, Victor Bertschenko, Renzo Rado, Juliette McIntyre, Diane LaFlesh and Leslaw Binkowski. I want to thank and acknowledge all of them for their years of service to the people of Kirkland Lake. Public service is not always easy and they all deserve our appreciation and thank all of them for the years of service. And that concludes my bi-weekly report on the Office of the Mayor. Now, the recommendation.
Moved by Counselor Pat Kylie, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger, be resolved resolved that the verbal updates from the members of council be received.
All in favor? Item carried. Item number twelve, additional information, none noted. And the. Yes, and so at this moment, we will adjourn for a ten-minute recess before going into closed session. Thank you.
Uh moved by Counselor Lad Chava, seconded, excuse me, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, be resolved that council is running camera at five forty two P M. Uh pursuant to section two thirty nine, two of the municipal law two thousand and one, as amended, to discuss B personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, and C proposed or pending acquisitions or dispositions outlined by the municipality or local boards for the following reasons, item thirteen point one, request to purchase part of sixty five sixty nine seventy three Brand Street. Item thirteen point two, request purchase thirty one thirty three and thirty five Government Road West. Item thirteen point one, request to purchase thirty seven forty one forty three and forty five Government Road West. Item thirteen point four and thirteen point five, council and public appointments to committees of council and local regional boards.
All in favor? Item carried.
Moved by Counselor Dykens, seconded by Counselor Owens, be resolved that council reconvened in open session at six thirty nine P M.
All in favor? Carry? Declaration of. No, so matters from closed second. Yeah, thank you. Declaration of the funary interest, I, Stacy White, am declaring a deemed uh or and or indirect funary interest on the agenda on the meeting just dated December twentieth, twenty twenty two, open meeting, item number fourteen point two A, agenda title supplemental twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six, public appointments to committees of council, it is deemed the matter may affect my parent, my spouse or my child. Um the nature of my interest is as follows, my husband had applied to sit on committees and though no funds are involved, it is best for me not to involve this matter. Thank you. Is there any other declarations for more? Okay, so item fourteen point one.
Uh moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger, be resolved that report number twenty twenty two C L K twenty six entitled supplemental twenty twenty two twenty six, council appointments to committees of council, local and regional agencies and boards be received. And that council appoint the following members of council as elected representatives on the following local board for the duration of this term of council, the Temiskin Provincial Offenses Advisory Committee, uh the appointed members of council being councillors, Ranger and councillor Kylie. Uh and finally, that the municipal clerk notify the city of Temiskin Shores uh clerk uh of the above-military representation, together with the representative's member, the representative members' contact information.
All in favor? Carried? Um item number fourteen point two, I A, I will be moving back. And councillor major will be seconded.
Okay, moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dolly Dykens, be resolved that the uh report number twenty twenty two C L K twenty seven entitled supplemental twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six, public appointments to committees of council, part one of two be received, and finally, that the following individual be appointed to the Kirkland Lake Funding Advisory Committee for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six term of council, uh Terrence White.
Call for him. Help, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Two point.
Yes.
Fourteen two.
Yeah, uh item fourteen point two B.
Moved by Counselor Pat Kylie, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger, be resolved that report number twenty twenty two C L K twenty seven entitled supplemental twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six, public appointments to committees of council, part two to be received. And that the resolution dated December sixth, twenty twenty two, appointing public members to the Kirkland Lake Committee of Adjustment be amended as follows, and that the following individuals be appointed to the Kirkland Lake Committee of Adjustment for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six term of council, Ed Duchesne, Don Du Stevum, Raymond Mallett, Laurie Irvine, Pet Assad. And finally, that the municipal clerk be directed to conduct a month-long, so January twenty twenty three, call for volunteer interest for the following committees of council, museum advisory committees for vacancies, economic development committee, five vacancies, planning advisory committee, one vacancy, property standards committee, one vacancy, and community standards committee, one vacancy.
All in favor? Carried? Item number fifteen, confirmation bylaw.
Moved by Counselor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owens, be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor in third, and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty two one hundred being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. Uh its meeting held December tenth, uh sorry, at its meetings held December tenth, twenty twenty two and December twentieth, twenty twenty two.
All in favor? Very unanimous? Item number sixteen, adjournment.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dolly Dykens, be resolved that this regular meeting of council be now adjourned at six forty three P M.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone.